Good evening, everybody, and welcome to what would be the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, July 16. My name is Joseph Curran. I am the Director of the Department of Library and Recreation Services. At this point, we do not have a quorum. We have two of our five trustee members present, so we cannot open the meeting, but we can share a bit of information with the two trustees present. And getting right to that, I would like to introduce Cole Johnson, who's going to give us a bit of an update on our new subscription online resources at our libraries. Cole Johnson is the Branch Manager for Main Library in the Cermoni Branch. Thank you, Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. I'm here to talk about our new resources on our eLibrary page. If you look at our screen, you'll see DailyCityLibrary.org, which is the central place people go to use our resources online. If you visit the eLibrary, this is where you can access everything that we have available 24 hours a day with your library card. For the longest time, it's been mainly research information. You know, you can read things for doing a report, supporting everyone from elementary school to college-level personal interest, but we have some exciting new things that I will talk about. But first, I'd like to mention that we no longer subscribe to the Gale databases. We've signed a deal with Ebsco, which is their competitor, and they've given us an entire suite of databases. And I'll just go over them quickly. Academic Search Complete. Once you sign in with your library card, you have access to Academic Search Complete. So this would be something you would use if you were doing involved research. So if I put in something, if I put in a search such as genome sequencing, then I can see what's available, and it's all full text. I can read the PDF of the article as it appeared in the journal. So this is really useful for college-level, high school. This is the full text of an article. We've always had this kind of thing, but this is a new supplier. And the reason why we switched to Ebsco is that they're promising to give us something called the Ebsco Discovery Service, which will allow us to place a search box on our main page where people can search the catalog, as well as these kind of specialized databases, which until now have required you to visit them individually and get a simple Google sort of one-box sort of Google search interface, which more people will be familiar with. There's maybe about 15 of these, so I'm not going to go into them in detail. I will mention that there's auto repair, there's newspapers you can read, and so forth. But something brand-new that we have is RB Digital magazines. So we've never had something like this. This was purchased as part of the consortium deal. So One Direction, we're trying to push for as a consortium throughout San Mateo County is to have all the participating libraries pay into the same services. So for instance, one frustration we've had is that people can't access some of the things that other libraries buy, and they say, "Well, why can't I have them?" And we have to explain that we're tied to what we can provide to them as Daily City. With these new purchases, one of them being RB Digital e-magazines, everyone in the county has the same collection, and we're trying to push as librarians who select things and Chayla as administrators who approve these things and guide us to do things holistically as a consortium so that people have a shared experience, and also we get a realized savings through pooled purchases. So I'm going to sign into RB Digital to give you a quick demonstration of how it works. This is obviously the desktop interface, but the cool thing about this, really great, is that you can get an app for it and use your iPad, for instance, to read them. I have too many logins. One moment. Here we are. Okay. So you can use the app to read it on iPad and have an experience that's basically like reading a magazine, because it's the same size and you can flip through it. But I'll give you a sense of what the experience is like, because people can read it on their computers as well. So here is one of the RB Digital magazines, one of the ones that I had a subscription to and no longer do. Well, let's try Us Weekly. So I just exited out of it and then reloaded it. I had an error message, so that's what happened. So here we are. I can flip through it. It's the same thing. I no longer pay $8.99 at the new stand. Can you imagine? It costs $9 for a magazine these days, but I get it free to the library. And the beautiful thing about RB Digital is that there's no time limit. Once you download it, you have it on your computer or your iPad. You don't have to return it. And so you can subscribe, get notifications, and stay up to date with everything. And if you can't make it into one of our libraries, you can get access to all these amazing magazines. And I'll just go back to the main page and give you a sense of what else is out there. And just coming down here, you have All Issues. You know, you can go back. Our subscription started on July 1st, so there's only two, but as we move forward, we'll be building a backlog of available issues that you can read. Then you can see the magazines you've checked out. You can get help if you need it, but there's magazines for everyone. Popular magazines like Us, Star, Good Housekeeping, Family Handyman, Oprah, Prevention, all the things that people want at the library, they can now get them at home or on their device. Do you have any questions about RB Digital?
We can't ask.
We're going to not have questions.
Oh, we can't have a question session? Okay, that's fine.
I do have a question that I can't.
Okay.
I'll just write it down.
You can always call the library. And then the other exciting thing I wanted to present, because it is really unique for us, is streaming video through Canopy. Canopy is an on-demand streaming video platform. Their whole idea is to provide a more rich experience than Netflix or Hulu. They have award-winning films and documentaries, so it's a really nicely curated educational and entertaining collection of films. So to start, you choose your library, and then it would walk you through the steps of signing up. I'm already a member, so I'll log in here. And I have a smart TV at home, so I put the channel on my TV. So just like Roku or Netflix, I can watch these on my TV. So I have 10 checkouts per month, so there is a limit, because we are charged per usage. Fairly generous limit. You can browse by... Oh, let me choose my library. It still asks me to do that. And then it takes me to an interface that looks pretty familiar. It looks kind of like Netflix or Hulu in that you get a sort of cascade of movie posters. You have popular movies. You have new to Canopy, popular documentaries, The Great Courses. So this is where the educational component comes out. You can learn French, money management skills, languages, business skills, yoga. The Great Courses are a lecture series that cover history and college-level professor talks about a number of subjects. Popular World Cinema, so a really impressive selection of international cinema. The Criterion Collection has films in here as well, which are award-winning, highly-popular films from directors such as Fellini. All the classics of world cinema are in here. It works pretty much as you'd expect it to work. You find a movie you want to watch, you add it to my list, or you simply click Watch, and then you can start watching. I am not going to watch it, because I have 10, and I don't want to watch eight and a half again, because I've already seen it. But it works very well. Not only can you put it on a smart TV, you can use it with the app and watch it on iPad. So this is exciting in that we're getting apps that people can use that are...
And I'm going to interrupt you, Cole. It's a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
And now we have a quorum. We can back up, so hit the pause button on your presentation. And I'm going to turn to trustee Doss to open the meeting. Give me a second to start the recording. And then we'll go in sequence.
Cool.
So we just start at the very top of the agenda.
All right. So I call this meeting to order. So stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We just start at the very top of the agenda.
So I call this meeting to order. So stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
What's it asking?
I know.
Just try that again. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to do a roll call.
And a roll call. Trustee Fauqua.
Here.
Trustee Santos.
Here.
Trustee and acting president for tonight, Doss.
Here. All right. So I'm going to motion to approve the agenda from our last meeting, which was on June 18th. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. And then approval of tonight's minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Cool. All right. So we'll go ahead and continue to the new subscription online resources for library patrons. Cole's presentation.
Thank you, Cole.
Shall I recap it a little bit, or...
You could do a real quick overview and pick up where you left off.
Okay. So beginning July 1st, the Daily City Library has a number of new resources, and we're here at DailyCityLibrary.org. The eLibrary is always going to be the way to connect to everything that we have online 24 hours a day using your library card number. One thing is that we have ceased working with Gale, which was the provider of our subscription databases for a few years, and gone with their competitor, Ebsco. So we have some new resources for research primarily, or for personal interest. Academic Search Complete supports high-level research in the key areas of academic study by providing access to journals. We have full-text magazines, reference books, and primary source documents from Master File Premier. You can read newspapers. We have auto-repair information. We have business information. We also have, in Spanish, we have Referencia Latina and a number of historical databases and some things for kids as well. But I wanted to spend the most time talking about our two new, really unique databases, or sorry, services, not simply a database. RB Digital magazines, which offers full-color digital magazines that you can read on your computer or using your app. You can read it on your iPad, your iPhone, or Kindle Fire. So I'm signed in right now. I would sign in with my library card one time, and then it would remember me once I'm associated with the Daily City Public Library. And as I mentioned before, we're making an effort as a consortium to buy things using a pool of money, offer the same new resources whenever possible, because in the past, some libraries have offered things that our patrons have not had access to. So I'm excited to say that both RB Digital and the second Canopy that I'm going to talk about are available to everyone throughout the county. So here we are. I can explore all the magazines that are available. These are, we worked together in a group, chose what we felt were the most popular magazines in our experience. So anything from Oprah, HGTV Magazine, Popular Mechanics, Country Living, the Apple Magazine. So I'm going to show you, I checked out a copy of The New Yorker, the July 21st. So we started July 1st, so we're building a backlog of issues starting in July that will go on. And once you check this out, it's yours to keep. You don't have to return it. Obviously, no late fees associated with it. So I'm going to be reading on the desktop. If I had it on my Kindle Fire or my iPad, I could read it in a way that closely approximates the sensation of reading a magazine. So it picks up where we left off, and I can go through it in this way and see the magazine just as it appeared. I can bookmark pages that I like. I can change the size of the type if I want to do that. I can zoom in to get a better view of it. So here I am in the full-page view. That way, you know, you have the spread, or you can read it in greater detail, and it closely approximates the experience of reading a magazine and works, as I said, very well on the apps. Do you have any questions about RB Digital?
I have a question. So is there any way that you can see how much time people spend on magazine, or what's the most popular magazines that you guys have, and then you kind of condense it or take away some of the magazines that you don't necessarily need it?
Mm-hmm.
Do you guys do it like that?
Yes. I believe that, I think we have 300, if I'm not mistaken. And so we analyze data from the county, who already had, the San Mateo County libraries already subscribed to this product. So we were able to look at one year of subscription, or usage data, to see the highest usage. So it was very clearly like a top 50, and then the other 150 were kind of low-use, so we could get more esoteric things, but we definitely have the most popular titles. We can see who's using it, how many uses there are. We can't see how long they interact with it, but we are making informed decisions in that way about what people want to see.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. If there are no further questions, I will talk about the next really exciting product that we have, which is a little bit of a new thing for us. It's streaming video. So we have a lot of activity at our libraries, people wanting to watch DVDs, and we provide access to educational materials, but we also serve the entertainment needs of the community, and it's a very popular service. So we're excited to offer Canopy, which offers a pretty unique collection. I'm still signed in here from earlier, but once you sign in, it's the same with RB Digital. You associate yourself with a library. I've associated myself with the Daily City Public Library. I have 10 play credits per month, and this is going to actually reset on August 1st, so I can watch a lot of movies in the next two weeks. But once I choose my library, it will show me a very familiar view. If you've ever used Netflix or Hulu, you'll see a cascade of movie posters, and you can click into it to see more information, or just hover over it simply. So Colette is 112 minutes. The community has rated it four stars. I can add it to my list for watching later, or I can watch it now. And if I click into it, having an error message, which I'll check in, but I would just click Play here, check on, but I'll just click Play here, I can see the full review of it, even a review from the Boston Globe, and the subjects. You know, I can see the actors and the credits. If I'm watching with the family, I can go to Canopy Kids. Oh, okay. It might be because we're in IE where we can't stream it. So here we are with Canopy Kids, which has a more fun view. It has the pigeon from Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus, a series of books, and then it has selections of the Storytime TV series. And with Arthur, there's 10 videos in season 13, so you can go back and watch other seasons of Arthur. Funny Stuff, Adventure. And Canopy has branded themselves as a company of quality, so they try to have award-winning films and thought-provoking films. I'll go back to the adult view, or just rather, the general view, because they do make an effort to put some thought-provoking content. And I'll show you some of those subjects that they've put together. And we can even have staff picks as we move on. We can work as librarians and choose things if we find things that are of local interest or that we just particularly enjoy. So we have new films, popular documentaries, and here's where I think it gets pretty interesting, The Great Courses. You can learn French. You can improve your mind by learning the secrets of mental math. You can de-stress, learn yoga, the art of cooking. The Great Courses are a series of lectures by college professors on a number of topics. We have international cinema, and I think this is really impressive, because as a Netflix subscriber, I don't get a lot of access to some of these films that I like, such as The Criterion Collection is in here. So you'll have all the classic international art house cinema, indie dramas, A24, which is a really popular production house, and things that are trending, must-see classic films, Oscar winners, and then things such as celebrating women in sports, things you might not have thought about, like interesting curated collections, Canopy staff picks, New York Times critics picks, directed by women, feel-good film, current affairs. So you know, a lot of things maybe you could watch as a family and have a thought-provoking conversation. So we're really happy to offer this, and we think it'll be pretty popular. As I mentioned, you can put it on your smart TV and watch it through the channel, or watch it on the app, or just stream it within your desktop like I'm doing here. Do you have any questions about Canopy?
You mentioned earlier that they charge per user. How much is per user?
It's $2 per user.
And there's no time of streaming, you know, that you finish your...
You get it for three days, once you've checked it out. Yeah. So that's $20 per patron that they could possibly, you know, we could incur a charge from per patron. But you know, the physical copies themselves can be $39, $39.99 for a DVD. Then we have staff time of putting the labels on. We move them around in our system with the drivers and the gas and the delivery. So it is, I would say, pretty cost-effective when you consider it in that way.
Yeah, this is great. I think for me, I'm definitely going to use this as a teacher and show students documentaries that aren't on Netflix or anything. So thank you for sharing.
Excellent. Thanks. And just to wrap up, I encourage you to go to the eLibrary, everyone to go to the eLibrary, because we've really filled out all these topics, which are alphabetical. You can find science, we have things for teens, museum passes, of course, we've had those from Discover and Go, but we like to send... And I'd also like to mention that our new librarian, Patricia Delarque, who has a background in archives, recommended a lot of archival links that I recently put on that she thought would be of special interest to our community.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cole. And just so you all know, Canopy is not a new product. It's something Chayla and I have been aware of for quite a number of years, and it has been a cost-prohibitive option for us. And Cole mentioned early on in his presentation, one of the beauties of belonging to a consortium is that we can share costs of things like that. Making things like Canopy affordable today that we couldn't necessarily pursue on our own is the Daily City Public Library. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to the excessive heat policy. This is just a draft, so...
This is a draft, and we're seeking certainly your input and possibly your endorsement of this to make it an official policy of the Daily City Public Library. And this had its genesis last month, when we had that really strange heat wave, where we had heat in Daily City over 90 degrees, including some library temperatures that were recorded in excess of 85-ish degrees, which is, I will say, very unusual. Those of you who've been in Daily City for a long time, most people don't have air conditioning in their homes or businesses, because you usually don't need it, especially like on days like today. The air conditioning is, you open your window, and the air circulates, and it's cool. On those rare occasions when the internal temperatures of the libraries hits a certain threshold, staff thought it would be helpful to have some guidance. They like things in written policy form. And so we looked around. A couple of other libraries in the area did have excessive heat policies, and we didn't. So the policy here for your discussion and possible approval this evening covers that circumstance. I don't know if you want to go into some of the details of it, or open it up to discussion?
Yeah, we just, it's kind of a confluence of two things, an unusually hot day, and also the air system in the building not functioning properly. And it's happened in my memory at least twice, so it's not a common thing, but it does come up, and it becomes very uncomfortable in the building for people working, and also not a pleasant environment for people studying. So they just asked for some clarity on, you know, if it should happen again.
I have a question about how did we come about with the 87 degrees?
Is that Fahrenheit?
Yes.
So...
So I did take a look at what temperatures other libraries that had specified an actual specific limit used, and I found, for instance, the Oakland Public Library, they did have some closures, and they set it at 87. Redwood City Library also during that time period did close down one of their branches, but theirs was set at 83, which, that can happen sometimes if you just have, like, a lot of people for a storytime, for example. So we didn't want to set it to a temperature that might just be the upper end of normal. And then the other library that I found with a specific setting was Palo Alto, uses 90, which seemed rather toasty.
So it is very subjective. There's no legislation behind this. There's no real science. I think it's more of an intuitive, how hot is too hot to be in a library? And it would probably vary wildly from the three of you, you know, compared to us, so...
I'm pretty sure all the libraries, their temperature, their thermometer, you know, their thermometer or whatever, they're all working up-to-date, you know, if anything comes up.
Yeah, and we definitely have had some issues, you alluded to, where it's actually caused by malfunction in the heating system.
Yeah.
It's blowing hot air, and a day that it doesn't need to blow in hot air, so it kind of exacerbates it. I don't believe that was the instance that happened. I think it was just wasn't air circulating the way it should have, because there was a mechanical failure.
And it was fixed, but in the interim, there were two days that were real hot.
Okay.
And on the recreation side, I'll add, because we have gyms, and they have the same constraints. Sometimes it's just too hot to play basketball or volleyball. It's very subjective there. They kind of, they don't have a guideline. They make a determination, like, okay, now it's too hot, and they'll stop activities in the gym, and you have to open doors and windows, see if that helps. But if this goes forward, it might be something we look at on the recreation side, too, so they have a policy, so it's more objective rather than subjective. Because everybody's subjectivity for heat is going to be a little bit different, the threshold.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think what I do like about it is that, I mean, just knowing the population of folks that go into the libraries, as a lot of them being young, like, really little, like little kids and young people, and like older folks, I think it makes a lot of sense to me to have some sort of protocol around this. I mean, I can imagine it's not going to come up too, too often. I mean, I don't know, climate change, but I think it is good to have some sort of preparedness. I think I'm just, another thing that's on my... I think I'm just, another thing that's on my mind is around, what's the kind of, like, human resources perspective on this, like especially for the staff? I think I'm just especially thinking of, I know that a lot of, like, there's already not a lot of hours for some staff, and so if this policy does come into play, how does that kind of fit into supporting some of the staff? And then I think just like capacity and training around some of these protocols, like how are we going to make sure all the staff are kind of up to date if it does go through?
Yeah, that's certainly a consideration, and the fact that there are four libraries. If this happened to all four, we're probably going under some sort of cataclysmic disaster. But ideally, let's say it's too hot at Bay Shore, we wouldn't send the full-time staff home. We'd reassign them to one of the libraries that hopefully is open. If, and hourly, if there wasn't a need, they might be sent home for the day. And really, this policy is probably, to be honest, more for staff than the public, because the public, if you walk into a building and it's too hot, you can turn around and leave. Staff, they're obligated to be there, so this is really kind of for their protection.
I was kind of feel sorry at this part. Part-time staff go home unbaided for time lost, when it's really not their control because...
Be part-time.
They're already part-time, you know, and if they lose...
You could scratch that if that's...
Yeah. I am just sensitive in that matter. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's what I was thinking about, too, is like if there are things that are beyond staff control, can there be some protective protocols around their time and their labor?
This is nature.
So would you like me to remove the term "full-time" in front of staff to go to another branch and just make it staff? What's that?
I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, you guys handle the staff.
I can't imagine we're ever going to have too much staff.
No, that's not generally a problem. It would normally be just a transportation issue, or sometimes even part-time staff are happy to have a little time off.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be great if we do it that way. I mean, I think it's an opportunity to also have some added capacity at other branches if we would need to close a branch because of this excessive heat.
I mean, to me, if it's hot in Daly City, it's hot everywhere.
Right.
This will be, it's hot and there's something wrong with the fans or the boilers or something.
Okay.
Yeah, and some of the neighboring cities down the peninsula, East Bay, where they're accustomed to warm weather like today, their buildings are air-conditioned, ours are not for the most part. So that's kind of the difference.
Okay.
I imagine.
I second that. If they can have the option to go, and if they're not, then they're not getting paid for it.
I agree with that.
Have staff have the option to go to another branch? How about that?
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so moving on.
Yeah, ideally, we would look, at this point, we would look for, we typically use the word endorsement of the board on a voice vote. I can do a roll call. And then it would become part of your binder of policies, and we'll add it to the online policies, and we'll certainly, I think we've gotten a fair amount of feedback from staff, but we would let the staff know this is official, and so next time we have one of those weird heat waves, that they all know that there are protocols. So with that, I think somebody would make a motion to endorse the excessive heat policy.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to endorse the excessive heat policy.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll do a voice vote.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Faupoua?
Yes.
Trustee Santos?
Yes.
Acting President Dost?
Yes.
Okay. You have just endorsed our latest Daly City Public Library policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to advocacy. So we could talk about if we've gone to visit any libraries lately and, you know, like what's been going on at those libraries. I actually visited Bay Shore Library today, and I got to see the seed library. It was pretty cool. I have some flyers if y'all want some.
Yep.
And I think, yeah, the start of it is going pretty well. A lot of people are interested in, like, asking about it and, like, you know, if there are any other seeds that are available, but it is like, you know, depending on, like, the season in Daly City. So that was pretty cool. Yeah.
Did you notice the new history display?
I did. I looked at that, too.
And spanking new.
That is new?
No way.
There's a little display of history of the Bay Shore.
Where at, on the library?
Library, in a display case there. It was completed in conjunction with some volunteers from the Daly City History Museum.
Awesome. Well, I went to Westlake Library last Thursday, and is it Stephanie is her name? What's her name?
Karen?
Karen. She was the Bay Shore before, and that's how I knew her. She used to work over there, used to bring preschool over there. Surprised to run into her over there. And they're in good hands. They were talking about how the Wi-Fi and the Chrome, that it's working very well, and then some other things that happened there that has been taken care. And the patrons, you know, there's a lot of teenagers and children, and I asked them about their unattended, you know, the policy. So she showed it to me, and I was just wondering if it's in that policy, it's in different
That policy is not in different languages.
Here's the thing why our community, Daly City particularly, is diverse, very diverse.
Something like 48 different languages spoken.
Well, we're not going to go through all the 48, like in the most popular one, like the Cantonese, you know. We have a lot of Brazilians communities just, you know, start browsing up more. We have the Portuguese. I think those...
Russian, Vietnamese, Laotian, we got this a lot.
So, I mean, we can target the most popular community that attended the library, so we're not going to go through all, like, just the main one.
Probably what we do, we don't have...
Even in Spanish, the most important.
We don't necessarily have the expertise to translate all the policies, but all the policies are online, and we could try Google Translate and see if that did a reasonable translation of the policy. We do have resources. We could do, I think, Mandarin and Spanish, but when we get deeper down...
No, 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 I understand, but how many parents do they really go through there and look at the policies? But to post it in the library, would they come in, that they see it right there? The most important one, the unattended, you know, child, you know, I think that needs to be posted in all the libraries. They're not going to look at all the policies. I mean, just for me, printing out all the policies and putting it in this binder is just a lot of them. But just for this particular one, again, I just ask to put it in Spanish or maybe in Chinese.
We could, I could check in with the city clerk, because I know at election time, ballots are printed in different languages based on the population and the languages spoke here. They don't translate it into 48 languages, but it may be the top three or so.
The top three?
Yeah, we could look into that.
The top three would be nice. And I don't know, do they post it in the libraries, those?
No, it kind of, the excessive heat policy is kind of the same thing. It is extremely rare that this policy comes into play. It's good to have it in writing for those instances when it does, but we could look at maybe posting it.
Okay. That's just, you know, what's happening in Westlake, but everything looks good in Westlake.
Nice. Yeah, I haven't been able to make any, like, formal visits, although I did a casual stroll into Ceremony, I think sometime last week. Finally got my library card, and I'm a little overdue, but I thought what I thought was really cool. So I've been really interested in the summer reading collection. I'm really, personally, I'm really into young adult fiction, and so I was, like, looking. And then I stumbled upon the free book section, which I thought was really awesome, and I found out that they're always constantly taking any book donations to either add to the collection or add to the free book shelf. And I saw a lot of, like, young people really looking at that shelf, and so I know I have some in my collection, but I think if anybody else has anything that you all are ready to give up, maybe we can make it a habit to bring it to any of the four libraries. Yeah, but I thought that was really cool. That's like a quick update. Everything looks really awesome there. Seems like a really busy summer. I don't know if it's been, if it's busy like that all the time, but on like a Tuesday afternoon, that was nice to see.
Thank you.
Just to let y'all know, so some of the seeds that are available at Bay Shore are, so there's beets, cabbage, onion, and lettuce, and also cauliflower, too, so...
All of my favorites.
Do they all give these handouts with the descriptions and stuff?
Yeah, they have descriptions, how to grow it, and then they also have, like, a book on, I think they have, like, an information book on the different vegetables and things that they're giving out for the seed library, so, yep.
I am not a farmer, but I understand that that particular collection of seeds was based on the climate and what was expected to grow, and what historically has grown well in the Bay Shore neighborhood. So it wouldn't necessarily mean that it would grow in Westlake, but it's a little bit sunnier over there.
Patricia consulted with a master gardener before selecting.
Are they, do they have a piece there to grow it?
Not yet.
Yeah, I think they've been working on it.
And then who will approve for a piece of land to put this in? And where is it going to be at?
We don't have any plans to do that. I don't know if the school does.
The school district?
Yeah, do they have a garden at the school?
Yes, we do have a garden.
Maybe we can do a partnership.
Maybe it'd be nice if the city can approve a portion in that city property where the library is at for that.
You know, there is a new parklet right up on Otilla that backs up to the Cow Palace, and maybe we can have, because they just put in irrigation for that. And maybe that's a discussion we could have.
Yeah, you mentioned that about that park.
I do wonder if it could be in collaboration with Mid Peninsula that's already at the center, because they have a lot of young people that have, at least when I was working there, that shared some interest in that, and I wonder if there could be some collaborations. Because I think it would be awesome for those young people who are going there all the time to get access to a garden, or the families.
It'd be nice if they have a family down, not on the top of that escalate, not that, because I wouldn't be climbing up there for a garden.
So communication, we have our Coffee with Trustees event coming up. So we have, we wrote down two dates, which was July 25th, and then, or August 8th from 3:00 to 6:00. So we wanted to, like, revisit those two dates and decide which date, which date we would want to do it on.
So July 25th is, I'm planning to attend the DCPLA meeting at 11:00, and I don't want to take the whole day off.
So August 8th, maybe?
So I was going to ask about maybe August 8th.
That works for me.
Personally, August 8th would be the date that would work for me.
Okay. And we'll go with August 8th.
And should we do it at Beishore?
Yeah, Beishore would be good. We were deciding to be at Beishore.
And I know we wanted to help promote the seed library to folks, too.
Okay. Okay, so August 8th at Bay Shore. All right. And then community involvement, are there any events that are coming up that we should know about?
I think on our next item, Victoria will share with us.
Okay.
Cool. So that's right.
So we're moving on to the report from DCPLA.
It's like now, now?
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Yes, our big event coming up, of course, is the Crazy About Cars, and that is on September 14th, and we're right now finalizing some of the advertising for that, and that will be live soon, and I hope that you all share it as much as possible, and I hope you'll put on your calendars. It's from noon to 3:00 on September 14th. So it should be fun. It's going to be at Ceramante Center. It'll be a little different from last year, so that should be interesting, and we're going to have lots of kids' activities, and we're actively seeking new sponsors, so...
Okay. Is it a free, is it a free entrance?
Yes, yes. There is no charge at all. It's a fundraising event that is funded by the sponsorships. So there'll be, like, there's a car show, and then there's a pit crew challenge where they have a competition to see who can change a tire the fastest.
Oh, nice.
And there's a few vendors. Last year was the first one, and it went really well, so we're hoping this year it will be even better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any announcements?
I guess not, I'll save it for next meeting.
All right. And then agenda building for next meeting, so do y'all want to add anything to the agenda for the next meeting?
I think we need to revisit some of the, or revise some of the policies that...
Is there one that you want to start with, maybe?
I think we can all look into it, and then we'll shoot an email of what you guys think, and then we'll let you guys know.
All right, so our homework is to look at the policies and then, yeah, and then, yeah, continue to visit the libraries. Yep, all right. Any public comment? Nope. All right. So I adjourned this meeting. Is that what I said? I don't know. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
At...